Park and those are for recreation focused activities. So for Pride Park, we're looking at some of the equipment. For Garrison's Place in Byerly Park, we're looking at some of the equipment improvements and some ADA improvements. And then for Lawton Park, we're looking at doing. Rehabilitation for the underused tennis courts. Fourth and Railroad project combined potentially with Sixth Street Corridor revitalization. Uh will be a kind of a citywide project, look at our housing needs, our marketing needs. And also some master development planning across citywide. Uh focusing on Sixth Street and Fourth and Railroad as well as some other areas in the city. Uh this downtown lighting enhancements, again, we were looking at um brightening up our downtown. That's been a detriment to our um downtown for our nightlife. We want to increase that with Operation Get Lit. And then we're looking at again, increasing the security camera uh funding to hundred thousand or two six hundred thousand dollars. Main Society is sixty thousand dollar contribution for their work doing with the animals. And then we still have unassigned seventy six thousand dollars of the. Any questions on any of those or any further comments?
Yes. Um Daniel, did you have a chance to speak with the owners of the properties behind uh Pride Park?
Not yet. As we're going forward with the any type of planning, we'll definitely consider that.
Alright.
This is just right now, we're just um I'll be bringing to you guys next week in a resolution obligating these funds. So we'll have that on the record. Once we get that started, we will get to work on each of these projects because we only have two years to do this.
Alright, thank you.
Everybody good?
Good.
Alright, great. Well, again, I just want to thank you guys all. That was a really great meeting. And again, thank you Theresa for the suggestion for the bus tour. I think that really was the best part of that day, the three hour tour. Um I think we all got a chance to see a lot of fun things. I really appreciate what we did. Alright, if you go to the next slide and I think we have a couple of slides. Okay, next one. Philip, will you join me up here on the left side uh to my left? So basically what I want to do is give you guys an update on what's going on with our South Carolina improvement plan. This was the ten million dollar grant, a nine million dollar grant and a million dollars of our money to buy the total of ten million dollars worth of projects. This, I sent you guys a summary of each of these projects where we stand. They are focusing on a variety of things, um most notably our water tower, wastewater treatment plant, and also some lift station improvements and pump station improvements. The main thing I want to talk about today, and you certainly can ask any questions about some of these, but the main thing I want to talk today is about the water tank. So this is the fifth string water tank, the egg shaped tank that is I kind of iconic for Hartsville. It's sixty five years old. It's where the majority of our water comes. It's now older than sixty five years old. Ah, it's older, yeah. Um so nineteen thirty eight, um she is, needs to be retired. And what we need to do is select a new site for that um water tower. We've been looking at different areas. I'm trying to stick to city owned properties. Um if you go to the next slide. Um that's where it currently is. Um you can see it's right next to the uh Citizens Bank. And it is located behind uh where it used to be that, um I guess that was the old power office, but this got torn down recently, so it's a vacant lot. That site is where we pump the water and also store the water in the tank and then distribute the water from that location. And so we need to find a spot that makes sense to, that is in the same area, because that's where our aquifer is that we're tapping into. And also um is going to not impact surrounding area, because now we're doing an industrial essentially commercial, not industrial application. But it needs to have a a wide area to work in, right? Hundred feet?
It is basically two hundred feet of diameter, so a hundred foot radius in all directions for contamination zone. If it does. It costs more of a call. Wellhead that you have to drill down into, you have a casing that goes into a screen and typically that casing is fifty feet. If you do less than a hundred foot pollution radius zone, then you have to take that ground a lot deeper just to protect it from any kind of contamination.
The one site that, and I was just looking at city owned. We certainly can talk about other properties. We'd have to acquire them. Pool Street has come up as a possible location. Um I have, I've had some plans for Pool Street as part of Sixth Street revitalization. That site is no longer really in use. Um it does have some police storage for evidence, but we are currently working on ways to get that out of there. We used to have offices in there. Um we've moved those since because it was not. Uh feasible for that use anymore. And so right now it really is just storage for the city. Um and so my goal is to at some point incorporate it into a Sixth Street revitalization. I was hoping to actually extend Lawrence through there to add another connectivity to the um Sixth Street corridor. Um and that was actually part of our raise grant application as well is to include that thing. So we only need about, was it about acre at the max, a max? That, the current site is sitting on about a quarter acre. But the acre is what we need. And so I did identify a couple of other spots near the fire station um that we could look at that's city owned. Uh but right now we're looking at Pool Street as kind of a main, because that qualifies for that two hundred foot.
So how far from the uh, I guess, original site? That's the max you can go from. I used to mention our figures are.
It just needs to be in the general area for our piping and whatnot.
Oh wait, well, it's generally a quarter of a mile or.
You don't want to get too close depending on which direction you're going. Going. West, go a little bit farther, we've got the cemetery tank which is but just roundabout right behind Magnolia Cemetery.
Yeah, I got you.
You don't want to get too close to it. If you're north, that poses a little bit of problem because we got North Fifth Street Tank, which is the ground level tank right behind Vines.
Yeah.
Preferably, it's gonna be somewhere.
Southeast.
Say probably a little farther than Tenth Street, but that's probably pushing it or or tenth or ninth. You've got the other way, Fourth Street, somewhere around that area. It's probably as far as you want to go. But you also want to make sure you have a ten inch water main or larger to tap into to distribute the water into the system. Preferably on a twelve inch. Pool Street does have a twelve inch that wouldn't take much to pipe to. The area at Marlboro and Seven, a little bit more work, but you could get it to our mains a lot quicker than some other locations.
See Marlboro and Seventh Street, yeah.
So that's uh.
We just got, that tank particularly was the main blood tank in the city that supplied most of the water. It ran the longest um it in cemetery. Now that we have the Smith Street Tank online, it has taken a lot of burden off of that tank, but now it's still a tank. Tank for the city. North is the main tank, which is out there on one fifty one.
Yeah.
Back up in case things go down, because we have one tank down currently, but we're able to keep up, we got that.
You say you have one tank down now? Or which tank, which tank or cemetery tank? Okay, gotcha.
What kind of condition is the tower in itself? Go ahead.
It. Tower is not the worst one, but it's stainless steel, well, it's not stainless steel, it's a riveted tank. So there's a lot of rust to it. For it to even get a little bit more lifespan out of it, you would have to significantly wash it down. You'd have to repaint it. You'd have to sandblast it. I mean, it would take a lot of money just to get it into great. Great condition, uh not as down, I won't say great, but get it into a condition that is appeasing, I guess, to people. But the well is not in a great shape either. The main thing is getting the well redone.
So the infrastructure itself at the bottom of the tower?
Yes, but now if you don't do anything with the tank, I mean, tanks can last a hundred years.
I was just thinking, cut the tank off and lowered a little bit, because I don't know how high does it have to be for it to work for you?
Legs on the tank are in good condition. You can't really do that. Plus, the lower, if you keep lowering the tank, then you lose pressure. Because that's where most of our water pressure in the city comes from, is how high the tanks are. Honestly, the tanks could be higher and it would help and it, some places would get better water pressure if those tanks were higher. That's why the Walmart tank is a little bit higher than the rest of them, just because it's mainly for fire suppression for Walmart. So you have to raise it up and increase that pressure.
And we will remove it once we replace it.
Both the tank and the well will be removed and we'd have a new one. And the proposed tank at the moment is a single stack, so it wouldn't have the five legs around it. It would, I'm trying to think.
They call it pedestal. I think they call it pedestal.
Yes, pedestal.
That beach got one out there on Deer Park.
Solid structure straight up and um houses the lines going up and then kind of a pedestal looking, yeah.
Thing, it's on top.
It's not concerned, the egg shaped ta- uh.
That's. And the legs require more maintenance to work and has a lot more potential for it. It wouldn't just sing stack.
So it doesn't sound like it's cost effective at all to try to renovate what we've got?
We talked about that. You spend about as much money to renovate it and your lifespan would not be.
Got.
Generated as long as it be put into the.
And we're discussing about it's about a five million dollar project, around that, yeah.
Thank you.
At about one point five million. So the new tank you're talking about, um it would come up like a pedestal or like a fluke. And then the tank be erected on top of that, correct?
Right, yeah.
And we're looking, we need to go as high as possible so that we can maintain the water pressure we have now.
Right.
Or exceed that.
The main, the main issue is, is the location.
Yes.
And where we're gonna have it. So Pool Street, I think, is big enough where we could potentially accomplish everything we want to do on there. It just would, if there was any type of beautification, you still are building a water tank. That is gonna need to be secure, so we'll have, you know, fencing around it. We certainly can do beautification efforts around it, but you're gonna be creating a um, an industrial use there, but it's a completely necessary use. Uh after talking through it, it it seems to me that Pool Street is probably the best location as far as we're doing with the line infrastructure in place.
Because we own that property.
We do, yeah.
So Marlboro and Seven, that's where the existing fire station is located.
That's where the fire station, that's across the street from it.
Oh, that's okay, that's that lot.
If you look on the. Oh, we have paper, good. So.
I know what you're saying, you mean across the street.
Yeah, that's where the pedestal.
Yeah, okay.
Is that a lot block enough?
So we own, you know, these lots and then we also have the Royal Fire Station.
Yeah.
Rescue Squad.
Rescue Squad. We'll just discuss, talk about portion of it. To um take up a section of it.
Hey, quick look to maybe Pool Street.
From the side, so basically from uh Seventh Street to the property line, there's not enough width in that side.
Yeah, I'm familiar with those two lots. That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, we did park the trucks a year ago.
Yeah, right. Take, no, I say about six, but.
What, what type of timeframe are we looking at?
Well, this is, this is one of our biggest projects in addition to, so we're gonna be looking at, working on these a lot simultaneously. And so this is the, again, the, this is Arva funding, but this is also Skip uh funding. So we are on deadlines for all these things, so.
What, okay. Twenty six of this year's, uh next year's?
Twenty twenty fifth.
Twenty twenty six.
Okay, if, if you want my two cents, uh a quick take. To me, I'm familiar with that area. I think Pool Street right now probably number one.
Yeah.
I'm not taking the other two off the table, because you got residential areas near Pool and Seven and that area. And I think, what's other one? Fifth Street?
Where it is right now.
Oh, yes, those are the only, those are the only two sites you have, right? So uh I think uh future design, if you got a plan for Sixth Street, you probably can work around designing something in the future. But I think it'd be a kind of a impact. On the residential area of potential growth on Marlboro, Bayo and that area. So that's something we might want to consider.
I agree. I mean, my, my main for, again, was to look at city.
Yeah, I mean, it's fair to look at all sites, but.
And so um, because we even looked at across the street from the existing tank, which is vacant, and that's a potential too. Um but I think.
But then we have to buy that.
You have to buy it, yeah.
Gotcha.
And so Pool Street is, you know, it's been sitting there. Uh we need to find a use for it anyway. This will kind of expediate with police. We've been talking about using some of the Leesburg site uh for secure uh evidence and whatnot. Uh I feel more comfortable being out there with the amount of security we have around that facility. Um and so, and there's private access there, so that's what we're looking at doing, is moving that stuff out of there.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, any questions on that?
I'm good.
Alright, next up, we have um another thing that DOT has recommended to us. So DOT has come to us. I sent you guys a study. Um if you guys thought you were gonna be lucky enough to deal with a roundabout in your tenure, you're wrong because they're proposing a roundabout.
I know.
Uh basically what they've done, and I am gonna turn this over to Philip in just a minute, but basically they looked at the Fourteenth Street Washington intersections, the AM and PM traffic during school time, essentially. Is it's failing miserably at um handling that load, but it's doing fairly well during the rest of the day. So they proposed three different, uh, Chris, you good, the next one? They proposed uh three different alternatives.
Okay.
One is auxiliary turn lane, one is a traffic signal and one is. I gave you guys the twenty, this is a snapshot of the twenty forty seven um projections for it. Um and basically you're looking at the overall scores at the bottom. And over the long term, the roundabout performs the best in terms of total uh traffic. It's handling everything during all times. It has an A score versus the two B scores for the uh traffic signal. And as Philip explained to me, the traffic signals will work during the AM PM time, but then it will actually end up slowing traffic for the rest of the day, because it will create um stops when there doesn't need to be a stop potentially. And they wouldn't really go into the whole factor with having like the sensors and things.
Well, I mean, you'll have. Each signal, even if you did it during the non-peak hours, you will still have loops and or cameras or, we radar a lot, we got that, so that's a fifth street. However, each signal runs off of a max time, so no matter what type of traffic. But if you had loops, no matter how much traffic is on there, at some point that signal is gonna change over to Washington Street. Whether there's a car there or not, because it's gonna max out on its time. And then it might be a short run, but during non-peak hours, you'll have. But people will get frustrated by having to stop there for no reason.
Okay, uh, yeah, I took the, I traveled everywhere a lot, but after I got to remember, I took a trip up there. So um the issue I had with putting a roundabout there, I love roundabouts, don't get me wrong. But we got one on fourteen and uh, and uh at fourteen in West Carolina, you know the one I'm talking about. So I'm, I'm kind of spotting that distance away. It's, it's not even a mile. So based on what I just heard this morning, I thought the traffic light probably the best move for now, because you're putting in a roundabout. Either you're gonna have to buy those people properties that's sitting that on the street.
Well, you go to the next one, see uh what we're talking about. So um and this is not us, this is DOT's.
Yeah, I understand DOT, yeah.
DOT is actually proposing to do the roundabout, because overall does perform the best and it's, I think, the most effective in terms of cost and whatnot. If they opt.
Might cost a page because of the level of service that you generate, they're gonna base everything on twenty five year. Um and it says twenty forty seven, but they started off. I'm still there. Um but they had to base everything on a level of service for that twenty five years now, because they want to reduce the amount of impacts they have in the future. So they don't have to go and do something else. So if you put a signal there now, they potentially would come back later and put in a roundabout, back down the road in the area.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I, I understand all that. I, I got all that. I don't have a problem with roundabouts. Did them all over the world. But the problem with roundabouts, I like people coming, I do a certain part of the country, people are not used to roundabouts. So what it's DOT need to do, you need to educate people about roundabouts way in advance. You know, I watch people out on fourteen Carolina, they just sit there forever.
That's the practice when they put in.
That's the practice, yeah. I got you. So I, I understand where they're going, but have they actually done an impact study on the people in that area?
Yes, so um I differ a little bit about a little roundabout, very interesting.
Yeah, yeah, they move traffic.
First, talking about the first being, they're both for the first two traffic circles in South Carolina were both in Marlboro County and they were. Left a mile apart.
Yeah.
Now they have three of them. Basically, they're a mile in between our three of them.
Gotcha.
Um they, traffic circles decrease are, are ninety eight percent effective in reducing fatalities at intersection. The only one fatality in the state of South Carolina at a roundabout is actually in Dalton County, it's at the one on Hopmire and four oh one.
Yeah.
Their defense, it was a drunk driver who ran.
Went straight across.
Went through windshield. No other people were involved in it, it was just a single car accident. They also reduce traffic uh accidents by seventy six percent overall. And typically what people don't understand is there are probably a greater probability of traffic accidents. Because of the non-peak hour times and it not having a lot of traffic there and people will be more. Um and take chances because they don't expect somebody coming and they get frustrated. Um you have a lot more probability of rear end accidents at a traffic signal. So a lot of times when you, traffic signals do produce fatal accidents, most of the time, as long as people don't. Um but they typically accidents go up at a signalized intersection compared to other sections, even if you kept it the same. There's probably would be more accidents there.
If you put up a, a signal, okay, good point.
And to answer your question though, the, what they're, the offset, the property are vacant currently, the ones that they're considering.
Went to the, no, to the south.
The tree area?
Yeah.
To the top, so that's the proposal as opposed to actually digging into those properties.
Oh, so you're bringing it back some.
Well, they, they have alternative proposals to.
Yeah, yeah.
Offset, and that's what, so I think they are proposing it with the offset.
And typically, I don't know why they drew this one and put this at their first example, because on most roundabouts, you do not want. All of your legs to come straight into the roundabout, that you'll typically have some kind of skew as you come into the roundabout and start leading people that way. And also to slow traffic down.
Yeah, matter of fact, I, yeah.
Slow down on uh Fourteenth Street with it.
I, I'd like. Matter of fact, I looked at that when I drew, I said, well, if you cut here early, I got that. Yeah, I don't have a problem with roundabouts. I don't know, so would this be a single lane roundabout or a, a two? Single lane.
South Carolina has not, well, DOT, I'm not gonna say South Carolina, because there are some values that have their own roundabout. But uh DOT has not gotten to the point yet for multi-lane.
Multi-lane, okay.
Because their favorite, South Carolina's lag behind in traffic improvement um compared to other states. North Carolina's been doing this for years. But I don't think we got to the multi.
Okay, alright.
They are vacant too.
Yeah, oh yeah.
A little bit more knowledge on how to navigate them.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed out here on Carolina, they put the, the, the sign showing people which direction to go.
Correct.
That, that's very different, yeah.
Dalton County is unique in traffic, uh there's more four lane styles in Dalton County than any other county in the whole state of South Carolina.
And a lot of people don't know what to do when they got to a four lane, yeah. Anyway, okay.
In a perfect world, Philip, how long would it take it? How long would it take DOT to put it down?
Put a roundabout.
Can they do it in the summertime before school starts back?
They would probably work around school time now, they would be somewhere. Summer, but the actual paving part would probably try to get completed within summer time frame. What they'd probably do is buy a little bit more than I can speak pretty much. I think they might try to do is build half of the roundabout at one time and then run a leg off of wherever they're not running to. They're avoiding the impact traffic as much as you can keep, but continue going instead of putting it all in at once. Similar to the one that we got currently, but I mean, it won't be nearly as big, so the potential impacts would be greatly, compared to that. That was uh not.
Because when we push the traffic through the neighborhoods, we're gonna get a lot of fallout like we did prior.
Correct, I don't think that would, in that location, there wouldn't be too many places you could push the traffic to, because there's not more connectivity to Fourteenth Street in that location. And you can't get to Washington from anywhere to the tail, because that is pretty much going all the way around to come back down on Eighth Street after long.
Sure it is what it is.
So, so here's a catch in a, uh, down on Wa- um, not Washington Street, you got Washington Street, next street over is uh Russell Road. It's not far away, so why couldn't they put it there?
Because the problem is, is right there after fourteen.
The traffic.
Well, traffic, yeah, at Washington.
I don't know the full reason of why they're looking at it per se, but I know when I was in traffic at DOT, we got a request for that intersection. Probably once a month during school.
Yeah, I understand.
That intersection during school time.
That traffic increase, I understand that.
So we do employ a traffic crossing guard who is there for the.
Yeah, that's right.
For the most part, they actually are directing traffic.
So here's my last question, last question. So for the city council, I guess, uh, what, what impact we got? So yeah, yeah, no, we, we just out of.
You certainly can get, so they are asking for the city's opinion.
Okay.
Our recommendation, they do plan on offering a series of public meetings.
Public hearings, so they would.
So there will be a chance for public input?
Probably, uh, TV Thomas, they probably set up something for people to go.
Okay.
We'll get plenty.
And so it's, it's one of those things where they want to know our opinion on it.
I agree with that. I think that people should know, this is the plan. They can come publicly, we get for, pro or con against it.
Exactly.
You know, so that way everybody won't come in late, say, oh, I, I haven't heard about this, you know, why they doing this?
I traffic signal, I probably would not have a public hearing for that, but.
This impact, does it really impact you?
I know the PD cog is funding a lot of this, so I don't know what impact they have, but.
Hey, Philip, I do have one question. So you were involved with the first roundabout, but from the DOT side, correct? So one thing that we ran into, and it was many discussions that we had with Russell, which was our previous public works director. Um and it ended up being a cost to us, which was the sewer, right? That's what, that would be my question. That would be the financial impact to our side. That would be the one part that I was curious about.
For.
I would love to not have a cost.
When that roundabout came in, that was for DOT putting in the legislation, but now legislation for anybody that is under ten thousand water or sewer caps. The DOT funds all utility relocation.
Can we have retroactive? Can they reimburse me? Because we spent a lot of money, but we made it right. Fine.
It is sunset in twenty twenty six, however, they're talking about it in the legislation now, so.
And this would be a time, if we had pipes or we had things that needed to be updated, this is the prime time to get that done. Um and we did take the opportunity to get it right when they did that roundabout. It was just more expensive, but we never wanted to have to dig up the roundabout. So we made it right when we had the time, but from the financial impact standpoint, that's why I was curious about what we could see.
DOT and municipalities have an agreement that DOT for ten thousand, it might even be more than ten thousand. Relocation cost and for a larger municipality, they only have to pay twenty five percent of relocation cost and the DOT pays.
Now, now we're talking about uh like next summer, are you talking about them starting the conversation this summer?
I believe they're getting ready to start the.
The conversation depends on how, I guess, we answer it, probably gonna get both quickly.
And this too, I think, could be helpful with the townhomes, because how many are coming in right there? I mean, we're gonna see increase, right?
Doing this summer.
Oh, yeah.
Because that has to do right away acquisitions, they would have to do those preliminary um public hearings. So you're probably looking at earliest of it actually getting put in, it would be not this summer, but next summer.
Well, the state at the property that is going across, they can't have a conversation about for the next nine months anyhow.
Yeah.
So it, I mean, we need to be real cautious at somebody just passing and we going to have an accom- she just passed.
That's why I think the offset doesn't admit away impacts.
It, that, that's straight across her driveway.
Yeah, and that's why he was talking about, like, that picture seemed different than that one. The offset option is, is the better one.
Is the one I believe.
That one, that's your problem.
But the property at the corner has some issues too, doesn't it?
Not that, so I'm not aware of any, I know that we discussed the property across. When we are gonna be giving our comments back to SC DOT, um and we're working again through the cog, so Lindsay Privet, who we've worked with before, is working on this one. And so we will be giving our concerns about any, you know, my, my recommendation would be to talk about any concern impacts to the neighborhood properties. What are you gonna do to help, you know, you know, remediate those? And then does this, you know, is it for the general good of the population? And as Karen mentioned, we do have those townhomes that are coming in, so it's a good time to get some traffic approved. It's just down the street between here and Russell Road, there's gonna be, how many units, six, forty six units going in?
And with the water park, it does stay busy through the summer, so this is actually gonna help, I see from the water park standpoint, this would be a big help for us. Right, I mean, we had ninety one thousand people last summer and they're going on that road. Um and I would love for them to go more downtown and not avoid it, maybe the roundabout to beat that traffic through. Um it's a good connecting way for us, for people coming out of the water park. So um I would love it, but I do see the property concerned.
Indeed.
Those three houses, the one with circle driveway, the one with driveway, leaves right into the roundabout. Those three houses, the one with circular driveway, the one with driveway, it leaves right into the roundabout, one maybe not the bottom house, but their driveways would be severely affected on a traffic signal as well. And I don't know how they would handle that. Because they would not want, they could put a loop in that person's driveway, so every time they leave their house, it'll have to change the signal. They do not like to do that though, but I have seen it done in Ori County. The circular driveway, that's pretty close to a signalized intersection and have some hard burn about turning left for their driveway. But a roundabout, they still probably have to turn right, so their driveway be able to go around the roundabout and take it back towards Carolina.
It, it, it's perfect time for the conversation. The other thing is the crossing guard lab. Somebody almost hit him the other day when it was raining. So something definitely needs to be done, cause.
Roundabout probably would not.
Correct.
That's what I wondered. But how do kids get across?
Still probably would, well, they'll have, um, crosswalks.
The problem is we don't have crosswalks there, so that's where the.
How old and nervous for the crossing guard there?
Those triangles that are on either side, those would be concrete islands, so it would it would reduce the amount of time a child would be in the intersection because they would have a storage area to store if they needed to wait instead of being stuck out in the middle of the road on two double Y line.
Okay, and when do, and, and when do they want a response back from us?
So I'm gonna be crafting a response based on kind of the comments from this and then, um, don't really necessarily need to vote, but I'll be sharing it with you guys. And then you certainly have an opportunity at any public meetings.
And yeah, listen, learn from the last roundabout. Um, it, so the citizens think the city that's putting a roundabout there and we're digging up their flower bed and tearing up their yards and all that when, when it's not the city. Um, it's already been decided, the stud has already been done. And once they show it to you, pretty much that's what you're gonna get.
This is the recommendation you're going.
Yeah, and, and, and it's from my past, um, experience, when you get the recommendation, you're going, you want to end up with a roundabout. And, and I don't see any way roundabout that. So if we don't do it now, um, the, the people need to understand on the front side that this has already been studied and recommendations have been made. And they can look at the roundabout that we have now and show the, um, different statistics that did not and have that to persuade them, listen, you're getting a thirty-six unit condominium, um, you already got the school traffic and you already got the, um, Neptune Island traffic. So it, it's just gonna be better for, you know, that particular, um, corner.
That's what, so we just got this last week and we want to bring it forward to you. This has been a recommendation SC DOT has made to the city. Give you guys feed, you have a chance to give some feedback on it. We certainly provide them feedback, but they will be hosting a series of public meetings and public hearings to let people know what's going on. And then they will be taking the lead and charge on this one. We would certainly be involved doing with utilities and whatnot. Uh, but this is SC DOT project for improvements on Fourteenth Street.
I think that's a great point though, because I wonder, and maybe Philip, he could tell us, who could provide us with that data? Cause I'm interested to know what, what the decrease was in accidents at that, since we put in the roundabout. Would they be, is that something they can provide?
But also I got the traffic engineering unit at headquarters in Columbia. They can, I don't know who's in charge of that now, because Amy Thomas left to go work with the F H W A. But there is somebody there that all they do is do.
Right, okay.
Okay, well, we'll get, we'll get a hold of that.
I agree. I think that's a great point.
Have, have the stats there, what it has prevented and how it has let the traffic flow freely. Everybody gonna not know which way to go. We all tangled up, you know? Now we know that's not true. And to put that in their hands is something they can see and understand that, that makes it easier for us because they're calling us and complaining to us when there's nothing we can do about it.
It's there. We thank the public for coming and we do stand adjourned.